Call the meeting to order, please. Mr. Tibbs, would you like to lead us in invocation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for the beauty of your creation and thank you for entrusting us as stewards of your creation. We ask that you be with this board tonight, Lord. Give them wisdom as they deliberate and work for the citizens of Frederick County. Be with our first responders and keep them safe as they protect us. Be with the military members, our veterans and their families. Continue to bless them and let them know that their service is very much appreciated as they take their time to protect us and protect the many freedoms that we enjoy. And finally, Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with Supervisor Trout as she starts a new chapter in her life, Lord. Watch over her and her family as they travel and keep them safe. All this gracious God, we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman Lofton, you can leave us in the pledge, please.
Would you stand, face our flag, and follow in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Enter the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
Staff has none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. How would the board like to handle the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
On the consent agenda, on 6F, let's see.
We're not on consent yet.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda. Any further comments? Discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. We'll adopt the agenda as presented. Citizen comments. Did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. Sean Graber.
Mr. Graber. Congratulations, by the way, sir.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Sean Graber of the Back Creek District. If I could, I'd like to call your attention under the consent agenda, under 6F specifically. I would urge you to take it off the consent agenda. I would urge you to approve the $76,000, as I believe we may be in a time constraint there. But I believe that staff needs to be directed to manage these items in a specific matter. Most specifically, there needs to be a good working relationship with the Stevens City Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company. However, I do believe that the county must maintain ownership of that equipment as well as make sure that the equipment is maintained. The reason I bring this to you this evening, and I can't explain it in three minutes. However, the county has given that department some money in the past and items have been purchased. And the county career fire staff have not been able to access that equipment or utilize that equipment due to restrictions placed on them by the volunteer agency. While there must be a good working relationship with the volunteer agency, I believe that it is a mistake to give the highly technical equipment that this money would acquire to that agency without maintaining ownership by the county as well as assuring that that equipment is being maintained. Please pull it off the agenda, have some discussion on it. I strongly encourage you to approve the $76,000. But I also strongly encourage you to direct staff to maintain ownership and manage it through the fire rescue department. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Chairman DeHaven and Supervisors. My name is Shaniqua Williams and I'm a resident of the Shawnee District. We appreciate the call for an application process and finding a temporary replacement for Supervisor Trout. In looking at all the applicants, we hope that you take into consideration that Supervisor Trout was chosen by the voters of the Shawnee District with a 62.9% of the vote against challenger Kevin Callahan. She has proven to be a good leader and elected official. She has inspired many of her constituents to be more involved in the local political process. An engaged community is a strong community. We hope that in your discussions you will consider a replacement that will match her independent nature until the special election next year. As you make your decision for this appointment, remember that the constituents of the Shawnee District have voted on who best represents the values of the area. Supervisor Trout, I thank you for your service to Shawnee and for having the courage to stand out and stand up for your constituents and to speak for us in many discussions that affect this entire county. I thank you for always honoring what the community brought forth at these particular meetings. I wish you well on your journey and your presence here will be missed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Consent agenda. How would the board like to handle a consent agenda? Supervisor Dunn.
I'd like to remove 6F from the consent, please.
All right. We have a motion and a second to remove item 6F from the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. All right. Where shall we place it?
I would suggest you take it up right after you approve the consent agenda. Would be my suggestion.
Okay. We can do that. Thank you, sir. All right. So the consent agenda is adopted with the exception of item 6F, which we will consider now.
Mr. Chairman, we need a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Yes, we do. I'm sorry. I have it here. Supervisor Trout, consent agenda with the exception of 6F.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now we'll consider 6F. Who's leading that discussion? Mr. Chairman?
I'll give it a try. In light of the comments that we just heard, this grant, as I understand it, and Chief Linderberg is here and may need to bail me out, but this is a reimbursement grant, so funds flow through the county. And I believe it would be our option that purchases made in relation to this grant could be subject to procurement and overseen by the county. But I would want the chief to verify that. So I think the concerns that were raised could be addressed in that fashion.
Thank you, sir. Chief Linderberg, thank you, sir. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay, Mr. Chair.
Share your wisdom, please.
Board members and Mr. Tierney, he's correct. This grant is pass-through money from Virginia Department of Emergency Management. It has very specific details on what can be procured. I don't have that information with me at the moment, but it's equipment based on Stevens City's specialty team, their swiftwater team, and also any assets could certainly be managed and maintained in inventory by the department, if that's the pleasure of the board.
All right, sir. Thank you. Would you be willing to answer questions?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Chief Linderberg. Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Linderberg, based upon the previous comments, we would be able to get the money. We would be able to maintain control if we so desire. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Linderberg, I'm generally in favor of forgetting grant money when we can, but sometimes free money comes of its strings. Do you have any idea about any other ongoing cost that might be incurred by the county if, in fact, we take this grant?
No, sir.
Other questions of Chief Linderberg? Anyone? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Appreciate all you do. All right. How would the board like to handle this one?
This is a requirement called.
Supervisor Dunn.
I'd make a motion that we accept the money with a caveat that we ask staff to be able to work in what is necessary so we maintain control.
This would be a supplemental appropriation. It's a reimbursable grant.
Is there a way that we can go and have that, per Mr. Linderberg's comments, to maintain control and how that occurs?
You said accept, and what we have to do is appropriate the money.
Okay.
Because we put it up front.
Okay. We can appropriate.
Is that what you intended with your motion? That was the question.
Appropriate the money.
And the second?
Second.
Discussion? Is there any? So we'll need a roll call. It's money. So we will go Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. That will bring us to Board of Supervisors' comments. Are there any? Anyone? Seeing none? We'll move forward. Mr. Chairman Lofton, would you assist me, please, with the employee of the month? Whereas the Frederick County Board of Supervisors recognizes that the county's employees are a most important resource, and on September 9, 1992, the Board of Supervisors approved a resolution which established the Employee of the Month Award and candidates for the award may be nominated by any county employee. And? Did we get it? Is it working? Yes. Thank you. Any county employee, and then the Parks and, I'm sorry, Human Resources Committee selects one employee from those nominated. And whereas Cecil Affleck of the Frederick County Parks and Recreation Department was nominated for Employee of the Month, and whereas on July 19, 2019, when a faulty valve at the Clearbook Park Pool Filter Room resulted in flooding and submerging of the pool pump and motor, Cecil immediately stopped the flow of water, started pumping out the filter room, and set up fans to expedite the drying of the motor. And whereas Cecil continued monitoring the filter room and added a high-speed and volume shop fan to decrease drying time, and after electrical testing and inspection, the motor was inspected and designated safe for use. And whereas Cecil exhibited quick problem-solving ability, locating the valve, stopping the water flow, and setting up multiple fans, provided exceptional customer service, allowing the pool to be open for a morning swim meet, general swim on a hot Saturday afternoon, and a scheduled evening special event. And whereas Cecil's decision-making, troubleshooting skills, and dedication are of great value to the Parks and Recreation Department and have benefited the citizens of the county. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, this 13th day of November 2019, the Cecil Affleck is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for September of 2019. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends gratitude to Cecil Affleck for his outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes him continued success in future endeavors. And be it finally resolved that Cecil Affleck is hereby entitled to all of the rights and privileges associated with this award. Please help me congratulate Mr. Affleck on a job well done. Thank you very much. Just drop in here between us. Thank you. So whereas the Frederick County Board of Supervisors recognizes that the county's employees are a most important resource, and on September 9, 1992, the Board of Supervisors approved a resolution which established the Employee of the Month Award and candidates for the award may be nominated by any county employee. And whereas the Board of Supervisors, upon recommendation by the Human Resources Committee, selects one employee from those nominated. And whereas Emily Tenny is a member of the Community Corrections Division of the Northwest Regional Adult Detention Center, and on several occasions in the past few months, Nurse Tenny has made significant contributions to the health and well-being of the inmates and the overall success of the outside work programs. And whereas on multiple occasions, there has been a need to get inmate workers out to work quickly for special projects through our Community Inmate Workforce Program, Nurse Tenny has made these medical screens a priority while she handling her normal workload. And whereas Nurse Tenny recently recognized the possible contamination risk to an inmate who provided CPR to another, on her own accord made all the arrangements and coordinated the inmate to be tested. And whereas most recently Nurse Tenny spearheaded a solution that allowed an inmate with severe medical treatment needs into the home electronic monitoring program, which permits the inmate to continue getting the required intense treatment without complications that facility incarceration can create. And during this incident, Nurse Tenny coordinated with numerous medical providers, specialists, and the inmate's family. And when thanked, Nurse Tenny said her coworkers made it all possible by assisting with workload so she could focus on getting all of the medical approvals and details worked out. And whereas Nurse Tenny has a good rapport with staff and inmates and is a consummate team player, whose performance is often catching to those who she encounters and who continues to excel in the areas of problem-solving, dependability, work ethic, performance, and positive attitude on a daily basis. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, this 13th day of November 2019, that Emily Tenny is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for October 2019. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors sends gratitude to Emily Tenny for her outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes her continued success in future endeavors. And be it finally resolved that Emily Tenny is hereby entitled to all of the rights and privileges associated with this award. Please join me in congratulating and thanking Ms. Timmy for all her fine work. Well done. Thank you so much. Ms. Cunningham with us this evening. There we are. Welcome. Thank you very much. You know where the camera is on the post. There you go. All right. Whereas the Frederick County Board of Supervisors recognizes that the county's employees are a most important resource, and on September 9, 1992, the Board of Supervisors approved a resolution which established the Employee of the Month Award and candidates for the award may be nominated by any county employee. And whereas the Board of Supervisors, upon recommendation by the Human Resources Committee, selects one employee from those nominated. And whereas Michelle Cunningham is the administrator for the Crime Solvers Program through the Frederick County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas Michelle strives constantly to make sure that the Crime Solvers Program is not only successful, but also easy for the public to access and for operators in the emergency communication centers to interface with, conducting training with each member of the Emergency Communications Center staff to make sure that all know how to utilize the system and being available at all times for questions that any staff member may have in relation to working with the system. And whereas Michelle is diligent in networking with tipsters to make sure that suspects are apprehended as well as to make sure that tipsters get compensated for the tips that they give. And whereas an administrator of the Crime Solvers Program, Michelle takes on extra duties willingly and does them in addition to her other duties in the Emergency Communications Center, giving extra effort in keeping with the highest standards of the Frederick County Department of Emergency Communications, and has contributed to a number of arrests as a result of her drive and fortitude. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, this 13th day of November 2019, that Michelle Cunningham is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for November 2019. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extend gratitude to Michelle Cunningham for her outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes her continued success in future endeavors. And be it finally resolved that Michelle Cunningham is hereby entitled to all of the rights and privileges associated with this award. Please join me in congratulating and thanking Ms. Cunningham. That'll bring us to committee appointments. Economic Development Authority, how would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
I'll nominate Mr. Lofton for the position.
All right. Heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And the second? All right. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, although I think Mr. Lofton would do an excellent job in this position, I think it would be in the best interest of the county if we had a member of the board serve on the EDA in this capacity. Sorry, Gary.
Other discussion? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy.
I think it is important to have a member of the board. I agree with Supervisor Trout. It's important to have a member of the board on the committee. I don't, though, want to discount the fact that Supervisor Lofton's given quite a bit of time over the years in doing this, and I think he's been a valuable asset on the committee. I would just point out we'll have another opportunity to appoint someone within 12 months. So I think the decision tonight is either, you know, and my feeling would be either appoint Supervisor Lofton tonight and then we can put a supervisor on next year, or if the board chooses to put a supervisor on tonight or to choose to go with a supervisor, that we very seriously consider putting Supervisor Lofton on when the next opportunity arises. I think he's been a great asset. I would ask that you also consider the continuity. If we do consider putting him on at some point, there may be some prudence in keeping the continuity of keeping him in there, but just food for thought as we consider this.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Supervisor Lofton.
I understand the discussion that's taking place here. As you will remember, the email I sent out, that the reason I'm on the EDA is because I asked that the state allow a member of the board, allow a member of the board to serve on the EDA, which it could not do before. The reason I did that is because I had been a member of the EDC, a liaison to the IDA, and a member of the EDA since its inception. I wanted to continue to do that, and I realized without the ability of a board member to serve on the EDA, I would no longer be able to do that. I have a real passion for promoting manufacturing industry and commercial and also workforce development within the county. I would like to continue that. To give an analogy, if we're saying we need a member of the board on this authority, then I would say we probably need a member of the board on Frederick Water Board, because they both basically have the same type of duties, same type of responsibilities. And so I understand why you might want a member of the board on there, but also remember that we have an MOU that states that the Board of Supervisors and the EDA has a yearly meeting to discuss what the programs ought to be for the coming year and that the director of the EDA is actually an employee of the county. So I think there's enough oversight there that my being appointed to the EDA would not have any detrimental effect at all and certainly would not diminish the role of the board on that board.
Further discussion? Anyone? The motion is, and the second is to reappoint Supervisor Lofton. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
I think we should have a board representative.
That's a no?
Yes.
Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
No.
Chair votes no. Motion fails. We're looking to appoint someone.
Mr. Chairman, I would.
Supervisor Wells.
I would make a motion to appoint Supervisor Slaughter to fill the position.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Trout.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
She's seconding.
Second.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second to appoint Supervisor Slaughter. Is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Supervisor Slaughter is appointed to the EDA. Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee, Supervisor Lofton.
Juvenile Detention Center.
I'm sorry? Oh, yes, it is Juvenile Detention Center. I'm sorry. Marked the wrong line. So it's time to reappoint our representative there. We had appointed Robert Williamson because he's been there since the organization was created, to represent us, has done so with great distinction, and is eligible, as well as Jay Tibbs as alternate, also eligible. How would the board like to handle this?
Mr. Chairman, do we want to do these together or do we have to do them separate?
Mr. Williams, does it matter whether we do them together or separate?
They can be done together.
Together is okay, Supervisor Wells.
I would move that we reappoint Robert Williamson to the Juvenile Detention Center Commission along with Mr. Jay Tibbs as alternate to the Juvenile Detention Center Commission.
All right, sir. Is there any further discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Thank you. That will bring us to Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee, Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, I am still seeking potential appointees for that position. I'll look to talk to them and then I will be ready next month.
Thank you, sir. Shenandoah Area Agency on Aging, just for information, we are soliciting for applicants for that position. I do think that we had one that hasn't made it out to the board yet. Is that accurate?
Not that I know of.
Maybe not. Okay. Well, we're certainly seeking folks who would be willing to serve as a representative to the Shenandoah Area Agency on Aging. They do quite a lot of really important work in our community. All right. That will finish those up. Request for supplemental appropriation in 2013?
Mr. Chairman, this one's a little unusual. We brought it directly to the board because there was no finance committee meeting in November some years ago, 2013, to be specific. The Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation made a purchase of the Hunts Ferry property, which is part of a Civil War battlefield. They came to the county seeking assistance with the financing of that, and at the time the board made a commitment to provide $50,000 to retire the debt on that property. The foundation has contacted us to indicate that they're now ready to do that and are requesting that we transfer that committed $50,000 to them. So it would be a supplemental appropriation for that purpose.
All right. So you've heard the request. I will add that those funds came from a dedicated proffer for historic and recreational use, so they were restricted funds. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we approve the supplemental funds for the approbation for the historic property, proffers.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
I need to recuse myself. I need to recuse myself from the vote, sir.
Yes. And McCarthy?
Aye.
Thank you. Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. That'll bring us to a resolution authorizing filing a petition of writ. Is it you, Mr. Tierney, or you, Mr. Williams?
I'm going to ask Mr. Williams to handle it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board has, of course, received.
The Board has, of course, received Supervisor Trout's resignation, which is effective at the end of this meeting. State code provides that the Board shall file a petition with the Circuit Court within 15 days of the vacancy, asking for the setting of a special election date. The state code provides that that date would be the November general election next, unless the Board sets a different date consistent with the suggestion of the state code. Staff is prepared a proposed resolution for the special election to be conducted on November 3rd, 2020, which is the next November general election.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the discussion. How would the Board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move for approval of the resolution authorizing the filing of a petition for writ of special election to fill the Shawnee District Board of Supervisor vacancy.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. That'll bring us to a resolution authorizing filing a petition of writ. Is it you, Mr. Tierney, or you, Mr. Williams?
I'm going to ask Mr. Williams to handle it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board has, of course, received Supervisor Trout's resignation, which is effective at the end of this meeting. The state code provides that the Board shall file a petition with the Circuit Court within 15 days of the vacancy, asking for the setting of a special election date. The state code provides that that date would be the November general election next, unless the Board sets a different date consistent with the suggestion of the state code. Staff is prepared a proposed resolution for the special election to be conducted on November 3rd, 2020, which is the next November general election.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the discussion. How would the Board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move for approval of the resolution authorizing the filing of a petition for writ of special election to fill the Shawnee District Board of Supervisor vacancy.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Procedure for interim appointment.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the action that you've just taken with Supervisor Trout's resignation, the Board has 45 days from the date that the position becomes vacant to appoint an interim member to fill that seat until the election. Based on past process, it's staff's suggestion that we advertise for the position. We would do that through the county website, the Winchester Star, and receive applications with a letter of interest from those that may wish to fill the seat. Leave that open. We're suggesting until December 2nd, which would give us time, give the Board time, to put that on your December agenda and select a candidate. This is all, of course, up to the Board. The one hard date is that you have 45 days in which to appoint someone, or you sort of forego that right, and the court fills the slot.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of Mr. Tierney? All right. So how would the Board like to handle? We're looking to endorse the process so that staff can proceed.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
I'd make a motion that we go and follow Mr. Tierney's comments, have the county go and open a vacancy notice, if that's the appropriate term, and to have that vacancy notice closed on December 2nd. Report consideration on December 11th.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Second.
So a motion and a second to adopt the process and approve the process that Mr. Tierney just described. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One more comment. We've had two other vacancies in the last three years I've been on the Board, and we've had multiple people that have gone and applied for these positions, and very few of them have gone and decided to run in a general election. I don't know who we're going to pick this time, and nobody on this Board does. But if you're interested in this, irrespective of how this Board votes, if you have an interest in this, then come next November, please consider, you know, running in a general election so that the people of Shawnee can go and make their own decision. Don't be precluded by saying that the Board just voted in favor of John Doe or Susie Smith. John Doe or Susie Smith might be great people, but another somebody else might be better. So I'd really encourage candidates that have an interest in filling the Shawnee seat to run irrespective of our appointment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion? Anyone? Are we ready? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Legislative agenda?
That'd be me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbs.
The Board has in their packet this evening, Mr. Chairman, a proposed 2020 legislative agenda. Staff sought input from department heads as well as the Board, and has attempted to incorporate suggested additions that Board members had. As in past years, we've sort of broken the agenda down into two items. The top part are the primary initiatives that the county supports, and then the second half is sort of a list of other positions that the Board has taken or will take relative to proposed legislation. This year, we have identified eight primary initiatives that will be the focus of our lobbying efforts during the upcoming General Assembly session. And in the draft that's in your agenda packet, staff has highlighted the new verbiage. Many of the items on the agenda are the same and have been the same for a number of years, but for ease of reference, we have shown highlighted text of new verbiage. And also, the input that we received from Board members is shown in the italics, underline, and also a highlight. And I would point out that this is not the final agenda. As bills are drafted and presented throughout the General Assembly session, we will continue to communicate our support or concerns on specific legislation to our state delegation. And so what staff is seeking tonight would be the Board's endorsement of this proposed legislative agenda, and then once approved, we will communicate those initiatives to our General Assembly representatives.
Thanks. Questions of Mr. Tibbs? Anyone? All right. The request is endorsement of the legislative agenda.
So I do, I do have one question. With regard to item number 14, and that is legislative ordinance that would require a builder or developer of a residential house to complete the structure within one year. The only question I have is that sometimes building takes longer than a year, so I'm not sure how that legislation would work.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
Supervisor Slaughter, I was the one that introduced that, along with the comments in the memo afterwards. But basically, the purpose for my introduction of this is in Red Bud, there are some houses that were beginning to be built. The developer then went and moved his workforce, et cetera, elsewhere. So what you had was a completed basement. You had a construction site that was essentially abandoned. It wasn't technically abandoned. But as long as a developer can go and do something within every six months, and that something could be simply as much as putting a bag of cement on the property, it's considered to be under construction. Residents that were in that area, I think rightfully so, were saying, here, you're beginning to build a house, and it's essentially abandoned, and you have a mess. So my purpose for saying within a year was to say that if a developer or builder begins to break ground or do anything, let them have a year to finish it. If it takes longer than a year to build a residential house, then I'm open to suggestions and modifications. If it's something that deals with a commercial entity, which may take longer than a year, I'm open to suggestions and modifications. But under current law right now, state law, it is impossible for an adjacent homeowner with a lot there to do anything about it. So that's what the purpose for the suggestion. And I, Mr. Chairman, and I'm also willing to work with the building community and the developers. I mean, this was just put out initially, and I'm open for a complete discussion on the pros and cons, what works, what doesn't work, but we had to start someplace. So I was just starting here, open and subject to further, you know, discussions, but that's the reason behind it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor McCarthy?
Just to follow up on that comment, Supervisor Dunn, since this is sort of a idea in development, would you be okay with removing it for this year's legislative session so that this Board can have more discussion and put something more succinct into this, since we are sort of all signing on to this as we're endorsing? This is something we want to see from the Board.
Mr. McCarthy, I'd like to just include it with a verbal comment here as I'm chatting, that I'm open for a discussion. I'd like to start someplace, and so you have to start someplace with a bill. And from my perspective, I'd be glad to hear input from builders. I'd be glad to hear input from developers. I'd be glad to hear input from residents that are adjacent to those. I'd like to include it so that it can be put up for discussion. As you know, Mr. McCarthy, you have a bill that will then go to a committee, and it may or may not come out of a committee. So I'm looking to go and use this as a vehicle to start the discussion and see where that discussion goes.
So just, if I may?
Supervisor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to follow up. So this is a, it's a very general but very specific item on this legislative agenda. So it's very general in that you sort of haven't fleshed out yet exactly how you think it should be worked out, but it's very specific with regard to the one-year timeline. And I know that in my business, as a real estate attorney, there's quite often times that a residential property isn't completed within a year. Would you be okay with rewording this in some way to say that we address abandoned properties that aren't completed within a reasonable time versus a one-year timeframe? That way, those reasonable times can be fleshed out at the state level amongst the legislature?
I think that I'd be open to having a discussion says the time that is conducive to both the developer and the residential area. So if you want to remove the one year, when you start to draft legislation, you're going to have to put some, either wording in or number in there. So for this to go forward, you're going to have to have something that's written, and it's going to have specifics. I'll help to draft legislation with all parties concerned on behalf of the constituents that I have. So, Mr. McCarthy, if you wanted to go and make a suggestion, I'm open to that for this purpose of discussion. But as we begin this process with the General Assembly, I'd come back with something that I think the builders would like, developers would like, and the adjacent homeowners would all consider to be fair.
Mr. Chairman? I'd offer an amendment to the motion.
Was the motion been made yet, or are we just in discussion at this point?
We had a motion to approve the legislative agenda.
You can amend.
I would make a motion to amend the motion to strike 14 until such time as we can come up with a better definition of what the solution would be.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second to the proposed amendment to the motion. We're now discussing the amendment, the amended motion, which is to adopt the legislative agenda without 14?
Mr. Chairman? We don't have an original motion, so...
We did not?
No, sir.
My apologies.
Mr. McCarthy's motion would be...
The motion.
The motion. Yes, sir.
My apologies.
Mr. Chairman, are we now in discussion?
Of...
Give us a second.
The amendment to adopt the legislative agenda without item 14? Yes.
So, so I'm wondering about this amendment, and I wonder about the timeframe when the legislative agenda will be presented to our legislators. Is it possible to look at this again at our next month meeting to maybe address the verbiage with reasonable versus a one-year timeframe so that it accomplishes?
Our general goal is to get with those folks before they go to Richmond for their early session, but, but, I mean, we can always go back to them.
With an amendment at some point as well.
Sure. I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Mr. McCarthy, I'm not in favor of your motion with all due respect. If there's a way that we can work out in the next month, some language that works to bring this back next month, I'm open to that. The General Assembly will not begin until June, January 3rd or 4th, something like that. There's items that are going to be before committees. I'd be open to going, having a discussion, to put it on the agenda next month. But if that's not comfortable, then I'd shoot for this. So that's, that's what I'd like to do.
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, a question from Mr. Williams. It's my understanding that proposed legislation should be offered by the legislators in early December so that the staff can be working on it and have it ready for when they come. So I'm just wondering, the timeframe of considering this next month, is that going to be too late for the rest of our agenda for this one item?
That's a good question. I don't know what that specific deadline is, Mr. Lofton, but I think you're, if not right, very close to right, that, I have a vague recollection that there is a deadline for them to get the things, the ideas in for drafting. I think it is early December, so the Board's timetable may not align with that.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that if we know 1 through 13 is agreeable, that we could vote on that, and then if, in the meantime, we can work on 14, Supervisor Dunn, I'd be happy to work with you on that, and if we can come up with something, we can always submit it at a later date. But I'd hate for us to put off 13 very important priority items in the hopes of getting 14 worked out in the meantime.
Agreed.
Further discussion?
Mr. McCarthy, I agree with you on the 1 through 13, so we don't have a problem with that. I'm open to wording that basically says for number 14 that some type of legislation that addresses properties that are not continuously worked on would be helpful. I think that Mr. Williams is right that the December 11th might be a little bit later, but if committees knew that an additional piece of legislation was going to come within a week, then I think that most delegates and senators would, would be open to that.
Mr. Chairman? I have since found that dated as December 5th is the deadline for General Assembly members to get the bills in.
Thank you. So that's helpful. All right. Is there any further discussion? All right. The motion is to forward the legislative agenda without item 14. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll adopt the legislative agenda, and we will continue discussions on item 14. Committee Business, Public Works Committee, Auburn Convenience Center. Who has that one?
Mr. Chairman, you skipped the...
Safety radio.
You skipped the radio presentation.
I'm sorry. I did. I was drawing down the margin. Public Safety Radio, who has that one?
That's me again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. As the Board might recall, on June 12th, there was a work session held with Mission Critical Partners to hear the findings of their Public Radio System Technical Assessment report. The Board received the report, which provided an overview of the current radio system, a recommended level of coverage or performance standard, a recommended system design, and an estimated cost to implement. Following the work session with MCP and an opportunity for the Board to digest the study, there were some questions raised regarding the possible use of West Virginia's statewide interoperability radio network, also known as Siren, as an alternative to constructing a competitive procurement process that will result in a selected vendor, the system solution of choice, and a negotiated contract for the board's consideration. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Mr. Milas to do the presentation for the board.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir. Appreciate you being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Tibbs. It's been about six months since I've been before you. I think almost everyone was here last time. There may have been one or two absences. Briefly, my background is in law enforcement. I was an elected county sheriff in Wisconsin for three terms, and then, most recently, I've been doing public safety consulting for a while with Mission Critical Partners. And so I'd like to start with a quick review of that radio assessment findings, because it has been about six months, and we really had that in a work session previously as opposed to an action item for you, and then talk a little bit about the Siren option analysis, and then go over the recommendations. So we completed the radio system needs assessment. You may recall that there was a report completed, which you all received, I think, both in hard copy, it's certainly electronically, a 50-plus-page report that was pretty thorough, I believe, in talking about the current needs and where the county wanted to go to provide a better quality public safety radio system for the users. We had the workshop presentation that was really informational at the time, and then since then, we're requested to do this more detailed analysis of the Siren option, and we worked very collaboratively with county administration, Mr. Tibbs, and I spoke regularly and reviewed the information as that analysis was completed. So very briefly, the current system, the biggest problem is insufficient coverage. This is especially important for the law enforcement side of the system. Fire and law enforcement are slightly different. If you recall, the law enforcement system is really very deficient in the amount of reliable coverage that it provides to the people who are trying to use it in the county. But we also have issues with capacity and redundancy and reliability. There are several sort of weak links in the chain that if you have an outage, it can cause a serious impact on the system that you have. And so all those things would be addressed in a new system. Basically, what you have, and if you recall, on a day-to-day basis, certainly on a weekly basis, people who use this system are unable to make certain calls reliably, and we came to you with a whole list of examples that Ms. Piles had been compiling that showed actual complaints and the nature of them. And so I just wanted to reinforce with you that this isn't a situation where occasionally it doesn't work just perfect. On a regular basis, there are problems with people who are trying to use the system for reliable communications. And as you can imagine, the people who are doing that are in the public safety community, and although many of their conversations are routine, there's a small subset that are not routine or very urgent of nature, and if that's one of the calls that doesn't work well, you're in a bad place. And so the users at that time, and what we communicated to you, is that they are really looking for a long-term solution. You know, their preference is not to try to put a couple of Band-Aids on this, but to come up with a long-term solution. And it's our judgment that the only way you're going to see significant improvements here is in investing in a new system. You can't really fix what you have. It has to be replaced. So then we looked at the Siren option, because there's a lot of conversation about the potential merits of that, and Mr. Tibbs explained in his memo the different factors that we looked at. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through each one for you, but I'll hit the highlights. We started with an initial conversation. It was a good conversation back and forth with the Siren folks. Had a conference call with key individuals, including the Director of Homeland Security for the state of West Virginia. He was very accommodating, and he had directed his staff to work with us diligently, and they did. We exchanged several documents, several emails, and Mr. Tibbs and I were looking for clarity. We wanted to make sure we understood what they were offering and what they were not offering. Any partnership needs to be mutually beneficial, and that's what we were looking to see. And so in the end, the issue that seemed to have the most potential would be if this sort of relationship would save you significant money. And really, we found that the offer by Siren to share the core, and core is a term Motorola uses, and this, in essence, is a proprietary solution, because Siren said, if we are to do this, if you are to build your system, and then we adopt it and make it a part of our system, it has to be consistent with our system. And so it would have to be provided by Motorola, because that's who provided their system, and the microwave network would have to be provided by Aviat. So there are other ramifications to that quasi-soul source sort of a procurement. But when they share their core, and the core in Motorola's speak is sort of the hub, technical hub of sorts of the new system, it assigns resources and it manages all the databases. They're very complicated databases here. Siren's is in the center of West Virginia, and we would connect to it via microwave. Theirs, ours, connecting to theirs, and that's how that would work. If you would lose that microwave connect, and the savings would be about $300,000 if you didn't have to buy your own core, which typically you would do. Other manufacturers call it something else. Everybody has a brain to the system. However, that'd be diminished by having to provide microwave links for Siren, because one of their prime interests in this partnership is they want to develop a microwave loop in the eastern panhandle of West Virginia, and they would hope to tie into some of your new sites or existing sites, create a couple of new microwave connections, and make their microwave more resilient in eastern panhandle of the state. And so to do that, our cost, we believe, Frederick County's cost to do that would be about $100,000. And then there would be another solution that we would strongly recommend you use, and that would be what Motorola calls Edge. Briefly, what that does is if you lose that microwave link back to the center of West Virginia, instead of being orphaned and losing a lot of the capabilities, Edge allows the system to pick up most of the functionality that you would lose until you could repair the microwave or whatever the case would be. And so that, those two things, the cost to add the microwave and the cost to add Edge, reduce the $300,000 savings potentially to the $100,000 or $150,000 range. And as you know, we're talking about probably a $15 to $20 million system. So in my judgment, a rather modest savings. The larger concerns with Siren is that the impact to the competitive procurement environment, because Siren is going to require you to use Motorola and use Aviat for microwave. And so there is, there would not, arguably, there's not a competitive environment to negotiate with, to get competing proposals. And in our judgment, in each and every time we've seen a competitive process versus a regular process, the best pricing always comes out of the competitive process, even in a case where maybe you'd only get one bidder, because we don't know. We'd like to establish a process where you'd get two or three bidders, but you don't know how that's going to go. Even if in the case where you would just get one bidder, I have always seen the pricing from that one bidder be better if they thought it was a competitive process, and they didn't know if others were going to be presenting proposals or not. And so arguably, with the small amount of savings and the negative impact of a non-competitive process, it could actually cost you more to go that route than less. And Mr. Tibbs may want to speak to this, but I know he had at least some conversation with county procurement and the county attorney, and there's some concern that this could be justified as a soul-source procurement. So that's a variable. And then lastly, because they want it to be consistent with their system, and their system is UHF, they said that our system would have to be UHF. We're not opposed to that. We just think it's going to be very challenging to get enough frequencies to license for a countywide simulcast design. It's not impossible, but in our judgment, that would be very challenging. And so you could be in a situation where if you wanted to go down this path, you'd get so far and find out you couldn't get enough frequencies, and now what do you do? So you have to have enough frequencies, or you have to compromise your design and do something that would require less frequencies. Again, I'm not saying it's impossible, but in our judgment, it's a challenge to find enough UHF frequencies, especially for a countywide system that's simulcast. This is another bit of a history lesson. It's hard to see, but the orange and the yellow are good reliable coverage. If you remember, the committee that put together the requirements or the desired level of performance for the new system said, "We'd like to have really good coverage along the I-81 corridor, around Winchester, and within a couple of miles of Winchester," because, you know, that's where most of the population is, most of the activity is. It would be good countywide coverage everywhere, but this is what law enforcement has today. If you put that model on top of the way the current system is performing, and you looked at that and said, "Well, no, that's not very good at all," you're exactly right. It's not. Okay? And then the way to fix that is to add more sites, and add more radio signal, and add more coverage. And so our technical staff went through and said, "They think about eight sites will do it." Doesn't mean it won't end up being seven, doesn't mean it won't end up being nine, but I've never seen it be far from the judgment of our technical experts. They have some very extensive software that they use and a lot of expertise in that. But each manufacturer does it a little differently. At any rate, eight sites and a bunch of new radios, and that's the primary thing that drives your cost. Those are the cost factors, the design, the implementation, putting the sites in, buying the radios. So that's why there isn't a significant cost difference, because essentially, you're going to have to build the system you need anyway. If you went with Siren, you'd build it, and then it would become part of the Siren system, but you're going to pay for it. You're going to build it to meet your needs. If it was the pleasure of the group who would be working on the RFP, we could include an option for a vendor to propose some sort of a partnership with Siren. It would really be just one vendor that could do that. It would be Motorola, because of stipulation from Siren that it has to be a Motorola solution. But you could say, "Every vendor has to give us a proposal for our core requirement, our system. However, if you'd like to give us an optional proposal to do something with Siren as a partnership, they would have that opportunity, but only after they responded to the primary proposal." So that way, everybody would feel it was still a level playing field, and each of the primary vendors who might have an interest would feel that they're being treated equally. Yet Motorola, if they chose to, could say, "Oh, maybe they could develop a proposal that they thought was mutually advantageous as an option." So I just wanted to point that out. This would be the improvement in coverage we believe you'd get from an eight-site system. So remember, if we go back here, there's not very much orange, and there's certainly not very much orange or yellow, where you'd really like to have your best coverage and look at the improvement. So it's significant, and it will be a very noticeable, significant difference in performance when you get to that point. And oddly enough, and Jay, you and I didn't have a chance to talk about it, but at the committee meeting, there was a question from the Sheriff's Department. They said, "Gee, we wished it looked a little bit better down here." And I'm also helping Shenandoah County build their new radio system and the project manager for that. We just had some meetings down there earlier today. They're building a site right about there. It's going to be the Cotton Town site. And Gary Yu, who was the retired chief from Fire Rescue down there, he's now the part-time project manager, and he said, "I'd love to give Frederick County the opportunity to be on that site." And we both think that that would actually fill down there. So I just mentioned it because it would be an opportunity to work, I think, with the next county over, who I know has a willingness to do that for you. You'd still have to buy equipment for it, but you would save the cost of constructing the site, because they're already doing that for their needs. Okay. And so very briefly, the new design would address the countywide coverage issues that we've talked about through the building of approximately eight sites. You might be able to reuse some of your current sites. We'd encourage vendors to look at those, but in the end, the vendor should select their design, because they have to stand behind it. It would enhance interoperability both within the county and with other agencies. It would improve capacity and flexibility that you'd get from the trunking architecture and the additional channels. I think we explained to you, you've got a kind of an old-school, conventional system now, and this would be a trunked simulcast system. It's a huge leap ahead forward in technology. It would be much more reliable because of the way the microwave system would be designed and the other inherent reliability and the new technologies. There really aren't any single weak links anymore. It's made to be very resilient. You can have a small outage here and there, and it just keeps going, and you don't even realize that it's there. Improved security features, improved technical capabilities. You could have some data functions on it, like GPS location and over-the-air programming, which down the road means as you reprogram radios, you don't have to bring everyone to a technician. It actually just uploads, sort of like when you download an app on your phone over the air on the radio system. That can save a lot of money in the long term if you're thinking over five or 10 or 15 years, how many times you might reprogram the radios. And it would be built on a flexible, standards-based architecture with an extended life, and so hopefully, this is a purchase you would make that you would get many years of service out of. The estimated costs, I pulled in the report a few things from the prior study. We were talking about approximately $15 million for the infrastructure and radios, and approximately $5 million for all of the potential options, for a total of about $20 million. We believe a competitive process will result in a lower number than that. And also, since this was completed, the school district came back, and they rethought how many radios they had initially said they would need, and they reduced that number significantly. It's not something I think is finalized exactly yet, but that significant reduction would probably be a million or a million and a half dollars in savings in the overall project. So it's not a small reduction. If, in fact, they do stand by their much-reduced number, it would probably bring, you know, save a million or a million and a half dollars. So that was good news. And so we're before you tonight, and as Mr. Tibbs explained, wanted to explain the Siren analysis to you and look for your endorsement to move forward with the next phase, which is develop an RFP and then go through the procurement process. So put the RFP out on the street, have a selection committee, select the best proposal and vendor, sit down and negotiate a contract with that vendor, ultimately being able to come back to the board, maybe five to six months from now, and say, "In the judgment of the committee, here's the best proposal. After negotiations, we think this is a fair and reasonable price." And then bring it back to you for a decision to proceed and fund the project. I know Supervisor Wells, Supervisor Slaughter attended a good portion, or almost all of the committee meeting, and so you have maybe a little bit of a head start on some of the details and had a chance to answer and ask a few questions. But that's where we're at, and a reminder that it's going to be two to three years, or as Mr. Wells says, "It's almost a little, almost always a little longer than you think, just like building a house," right? So two to three years from you saying, you know, "Okay, let's move forward" to when you'd ultimately be able to commission the new system. And as you know, the needs there already. So the people who are waiting for the big improvements are going to think, you know, "Gosh, I wish it could happen faster." But the reality is, that's about how long it takes. And the long pole in the tent is the site development piece. When you're adding new sites and finding land and building some of these sites, it just, it takes a while. So what questions may I answer for you?
Questions from the ward. Anyone? Supervisor Dunn.
If I've heard you correctly, sir, you're making a proposal for a 700, 800 megahertz system and looking for a vendor that will go and implement that. Is that correct?
In our judgment, the available frequencies are probably, we know that they're in 700. There are 700 frequencies that are available. We are not opposed, and the people who I have worked with on county staff are not opposed to having it be an 800 system or having it be a UHF system, but we're being a little pragmatic in that we think it's going to end up being 700 because of what we know about frequency availability and what we have seen. Any system that meets your performance requirements will be fine. So if a vendor comes in and says, "I think I can do it with UHF," and we audit that and we think it's viable, that could be an okay solution. Did that answer your question?
Let me ask it a little bit differently. If you're going to ask us to go and do a vote today to go forward, I read this this afternoon, I'm aware of, I read the 50-page report that we had earlier. Are we just voting for a proposal that says, "We have a problem, as you described, solve it," or are we having voting for a proposal that has a set of parameters? Because if it has a set of parameters, I'd almost like, Mr. Chairman, to defer this for a month, so I can just go back and talk to staff and see what their input is, pro and con on this.
An RFP will have a set of specifications and performance parameters, so it has both in there, that if you build a site, it has to have this kind of a generator, it has to have these other things. There are 700 frequencies that are available. We are not opposed, and the people who I have worked with on county staff are not opposed to having it be an 800 system or having it be a UHF system, but we're being a little pragmatic in that we think it's going to end up being 700 because of what we know about frequency availability and what we have seen. Any system that meets your performance requirements will be fine. So if a vendor comes in and says, I think I can do it with UHF, and we audit that and we think it's viable, that could be an okay solution. Did that answer your question?
Let me ask it a little bit differently. If you're going to ask us to go and do a vote today to go forward, I read this this afternoon, I'm aware of, I read the 50-page report that we had earlier. Are we just voting for a proposal that says, we have a problem, as you described, solve it? Or are we having voting for a proposal that has a set of parameters? Because if it has a set of parameters, I'd almost like Mr. Chairman to defer this for a month so I can just go back and talk to staff and see what their input is, pro and con on this.
An RFP will have a set of specifications and performance parameters, so it has both in there, that if you build a site, it has to have this kind of a generator, it has to have these other things. And the key to the performance is here's the coverage levels we want in the county. We would not say you have to build a 700 system or an 800 system or a UHF system. We want a system that meets these performance characteristics. We think it's going to end up 700, but the vendors will look at that, and the RFP will not say it has to be any particular frequency, other than if we decide to include the option for Siren, then there's a stipulation from Siren that it would have to be UHF for that option. But it would still be up to the vendors to have to figure out, do we think we can find enough usable frequencies that are licenseable to make our design work?
Supervisor Dunn, what you might want to consider is a pause at a point in the process. Maybe once you've had RFP responses, pause and evaluate those from your recommendation of your review of those. Is that...
And so let me explain the nature of the next phase. You'd meet with the committee and verify that these are the requirements that you want to see in the RFP. Then we'd produce the RFP, we'd provide a copy to the committee to make sure it was in alignment with the discussions that we had. The proposal would go out on the street, and vendors would have a certain amount of time to respond. After the proposal is out on the street for a couple of weeks, you usually have a mandatory pre-bid, and you bring the vendors in on-site, you let them go to the sites, you answer their questions, and give them an opportunity to ask for clarifications. There usually are a series of questions they ask, and a week or two later, you respond, and then they provide their proposals, and you usually want to give them at least eight weeks to, from the time it goes on the street until you get their proposals in. They'd like more time than that, probably somewhere between eight and 12 weeks is what you want to give them to do that. Now you get the proposals back, and we evaluate them as a committee. You have criteria that you measure against. MCP would take a look at those proposals and make observations and comments, which we would review with the committee. We would work with the committee to help build consensus about how they score. And the whole idea is to not only make the best selection, but have a process that can withstand any challenges. Because a losing vendor may come back and say, wait a minute, it was an unfair process. And you want to be able to go back and say, well, here was our process, we think it was fair and reasonable, so that you would, the challenge wouldn't be upheld. So now you select vendor X because the committee said, we think this is the best proposal. And the way, ideally, if you have multiple vendors, is we're going to talk to you, vendor X, first because we think you have the best proposal. However, understand that arguably if you had two or three and the others were okay also, it's just wasn't judged the best, you could go back to number two if your negotiations failed with number one. It gives you some additional leverage. So then, generally, at least three negotiation sessions with the vendor, and I can't emphasize enough the importance of detailed, thorough negotiations so that they understand what you want, you understand what you're getting, and there's clarity around the budget and the budget contingency is sufficient. Because I know you all don't want us to say the project's going to cost X and then later on come back with a couple million dollars of change orders for you that we didn't anticipate in the original budget. So we work very diligently to have both a budget and a budget contingency that are reasonable and that'll get the project done. So then, after all that, we'd come back to the board and say, okay, the committee selected vendor X. We'd explain the process to you and say, and here is a negotiated contract offer to proceed. And then you'd have a selected vendor, you'd have a contract in front of you, you'd have a dollar and cents amount, you'd have a contingency budget, and you'd make the decision on if you wanted to proceed and how you'd fund it.
You addressed my concern, my thought, and that was that you were bringing the specifications back to the committee for review and confirmation, and you were going to do the same thing with the RFP responses.
Absolutely. It's a very collaborative process.
At a point when you've analyzed the responses, you'll be back to the committee, through the committee to the board.
Absolutely.
That addresses my concern. Now, I don't know about Supervisor Dunn.
So, Mr. Chairman.
You have the floor.
You've been on this communications committee more than I have, so you have a lot more information and input. My only question to you, sir, is if we vote in favor of this, as opposed to postponing this for a month so I can have a conversation with staff, is there anything that is being restricted? For example, as the absurd, okay? If somebody said, well, we can do a proposal which 200 megahertz works fine, then is that automatically precluded by what we've done here? Or if something outside of what your parameters are works, is that part of the consideration? So I don't want to, today, I'm open to having a discussion and a vote for allowing you to go forward to saying, fine, what's the best option to solve the problem? I don't want to have something restricted. I don't want to be surprised by a restriction that says, well, here was a solution that could have worked, but because of your vote, Mr. Dunn, it can't be considered. So I want to make certain that if we go forward with an RFP, all options are on the table, that I have an opportunity to talk to, you know, the sheriff's office, I have an opportunity to talk to Fire Rescue, see what their input is and their thoughts are as well.
Sure.
I've had some conversations with them previous back in the summer when you made a proposal. That's my concern.
Okay, so let me try to address your concerns. First of all, staff and the agencies have already been involved in several meetings where we've spent hours talking about the criteria and developing the criteria, and certainly Mr. Tibbs has been very involved in this. So from the standpoint, have staff been engaged? They're already engaged. But in the next phase, they will continue to be engaged at an even higher level. We write a RFP in specifications where they have to respond to that primary proposal, but we're not telling them how to do it. We're not saying you need to propose an eight-site system. We're saying, here's the system performance criteria. During the pre-bid, we may say, and this is all public record anyway, these reports and things like that, so they can read the report. They can see that we said, I think it's going to be about eight sites, but we don't know for sure. It's going to be up to them. I have occasionally seen a vendor come back with a creative option. When that happens, we take a look at it and we look at the merits of it. I've seen normally, if there's multiple vendors, normally the proposals aren't way different as far as a design. Sometimes the pricing's way different, but the designs are usually similar. On rare occasion, you'll have a couple of vendors come in and say, well, we think you need eight sites, and this vendor says, well, we think you need 17. We're going to have a raised eyebrow on that one and say, well, either one is right and two are wrong, what's going on here? And then we have our baseline. So we do, we don't prohibit creative thinking, but we give it a sanity check. And part of the process then in reviewing is, okay, this one's a little different. Let's help us understand how it's different, and do we think that it has merit or not? One other thing that you do later on is oftentimes have vendor orals. And so that's an optional thing, but a lot of times they do it where, okay, they've gotten their proposals, we've rated them on paper, and now we would invite the vendors in to help explain their proposals, and as part of that, we would have a list of questions in a format we want them to cover. So, okay, we've looked at your proposal, we have some questions, we'd like some clarifications, come in and give a presentation. And so again, it's a very, it's a multi-step process and very collaborative.
So 30 seconds more, Mr. Chairman. So if the communications committee had said, we'd like to have coverage for, let's say, 95% of the county or 98% of the county, or whatever criteria that communications committee said, then this vote today would just simply ask for a vendor to try to provide a means to achieve that. Is that correct?
Yes. Essentially, you're saying, here's how it has to work, and it's up to them to present a design as to how it works, and then they will guarantee that performance level, and you'll test to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Further? Anyone? Other questions?
No, just a couple comments. The idea that the committee will be involved in the process of developing the RFP, just to reiterate, and that once the RFP is developed, then it will go back to the committee. The committee will make sure that it has checked all the boxes that they wish to see with this radio system. That is a part of this overall process.
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions?
Your company, as we discussed in a while, you're going to be writing this RFP.
Yes, sir.
Putting that together to present to us.
Yes, sir.
And that comes at a cost?
Of course. Yes, sir. Well, this whole...
Is that, is that a fixed cost that we have at this point?
I've given Mr. Tibbs a budgetary estimate on that and a detail of the various steps, a lot of which we just talked through, that would be there. And there's a lot of meetings involved in this, probably at least seven or eight times that we're going to be on-site, meeting with the committee, meeting with vendors, and doing different things. And so we would turn that, at the administration's pleasure, into a letter proposal and give it a little bit more detail. But I believe you have a fairly good understanding of what that would look like, and we've had a conversation about if that would align with your needs or not.
Answer your question?
No. Is it a fixed cost?
It will be.
It will be. It hasn't been determined at this point.
Right. I've given a budgetary estimate. I don't see that this is going to be any higher than that preliminary.
And once that's given, that will be a guaranteed maximum, not to exceed?
Yes, for the next phase of work. Yes, sir.
Okay. The only other comment I have is that we really need this system. Supervisor Slaughter and I have been involved in this process for quite some time, and I just know the needs. We have one other part, this doesn't affect you, but there is one other part. While we're doing this, over this three-year period, we still have to operate. And I know our responders now have radios that are not working, we're spending a lot of money on repair, so the board needs to not only look at this, but in the future, we start, we need to look, what do we do during this period while we're putting this system together?
Yes, sir, correct.
And I don't want that to get lost in this process.
Yeah, there would be some...
We have a need to keep moving.
Some ongoing needs over the next two or three years to replace some radios and do a few things to keep being able to operate on the system you have today.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last comment. One of the options was in the development of the RFP, that if the committee so chooses that they could go back and include the Siren system as a part of this RFP.
Correct, as an option. So the vendors, again, would have to respond.
I think leave the door open.
We should leave that door open.
Yeah, I think so.
I have no objection to it. I didn't want to presume that that's what the committee wanted to do, but that's certainly something that we can incorporate into that.
All right. Further discussion? Further questions? Anyone? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Okay. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we move the public radio system technical assistance to the RFP process, engaging the communications committee in the initial design of the RFP and components, and then also to have further review of the development once it is developed, to make sure that it does check all the boxes.
Another motion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
A second. Discussion, Supervisor Lofton?
No.
No? Okay. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman. And so Supervisor Slaughter, that would include at least the consideration of the Siren, that has not been ruled out nor has have been ruled in, but it's on the table as a consideration to see if that works in conjunction with Frederick County, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. Bring us to the Public Works Committee. Who has that one?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Go ahead.
Guys, work it out. Let me know.
Pointing at each other.
That's okay.
I'll try and start. As I think everyone's aware, we have been working with the school system for quite some time now to try and design and get in place what's needed to build a replacement convenience site. We've got the easement, we have a site plan that's been developed, and we're now ready to go finally with the construction of that Auburn convenience site. The estimate is $1.6 million. We are bringing it to the board, again, because there's not going to be a finance committee meeting this month, and I know Public Works is anxious to move forward. So we're looking for authorization to proceed with the construction, and it's our thought that we would take the $1.6 out of our capital fund. So we're looking to the board for your approval on that proposal. Joe Wilder's here if there's detailed questions and Supervisor.
Let's see. Supervisor McCarthy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just add that Auburn is our busiest site in the county.
Yes.
It's the most congested site at this time, and it continues to get busier and busier. So this is one of the top priorities, I think, from the convenience site standpoint, is getting this done. So I think this is an important one for us to move forward.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Any other questions? Anyone? Great.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
I would move that we approve the $1.6 million come from the capital fund for the building of the Auburn site.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. Thank you. That will bring us to a public hearing, proposed adoption of amended articles of incorporation for the Frederick County Sanitation Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll take that one.
Thank you, sir.
As you might recall, at the board's September 25 meeting, at the request of Frederick Water, the board authorized a public hearing regarding proposed revisions to the Frederick County Sanitation Authority doing business as Frederick Water Articles of Incorporation. The proposed revisions would enable Frederick Water to own sewage treatment facilities in the future and also renews Frederick Water's term of existence for 50 years. At the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, staff is seeking board action on the proposed revisions to the Articles of Incorporation. I'll note to Mr. Lawrence, with Frederick Water is here, should the board have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Tibbs? Anyone have questions of Mr. Lawrence? Or anything you'd like to add, Mr. Lawrence? Thank you, sir. All right. How would the board like to handle this?
It's a public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, it is a public hearing. Anyone like to comment on this proposed change to the incorporation, articles of incorporation for Frederick Water? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
I'd like the board to approve the proposed revisions to the Articles of Incorporation for Frederick Water.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? Are we ready? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right, sir. Planning Commission Business Public Hearing, ordinance amendments. Mr. Ruddy? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. This ordinance amendment that we have in front of us this evening deals with public utilities. And what this proposed ordinance amendment seeks to provide is clear definitions for public utilities that include utility-scale solar power energy generating facilities, utility-scale solar power generating facilities, and decommissioning. Those second two, if you will, definitions were requested by the Board of Supervisors during our discussion of this item. What the ordinance amendment also does, it provides additional regulations for the utility-scale solar generating facilities to make those arrangements necessary for decommissioning in a manner consistent with the state code. There is an additional requirement that would also require a site plan be approved through Frederick County. So again, that is the purpose of this amendment for public utilities, utility-scale solar. Again, the intent is to codify what utility-scale solar power generating facilities is described in the county's ordinance. And it also, again, codifies those changes to the code regarding decommissioning. county's ordinance. And it also, again, codifies those changes to the code regarding decommissioning. What you will notice throughout the amendments is a variety of changes to different sections that provides consistency in the terminology for public utilities throughout the county's zoning ordinance. The history of the review of this particular application, excuse me, this particular amendment goes back to the DRC, which discussed the item at their June 27th, July 25th, and August 22nd meetings. The DRC supported the changes. This item was then discussed by the Planning Commission on September the 4th, and the Board of Supervisors on the 25th of September. Again, with the two requested definitions added, the board moved it forward to public hearing. Planning Commission had their public hearing on October the 16th and recommended approval, and we're here this evening for the Board of Supervisors to provide direction on this proposed ordinance amendment for public utilities to include utility-scale solar facilities, again, to codify the current definition that includes that. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Mr. Ruddy, anyone? Supervisor Dunn?
In the decommissioning process, does the county have control on that decommissioning? For example, if the board approves something in year one, and 20 years later, 30 years later, those that put those solar panels in come back and say, "We want to change something." Does the county get to approve that, or does the county say, "No, you made this promise 30 years ago, and you need to honor your promise," as opposed to going, for example, the Mining and Energy Committee in Richmond, which for mines has a capability of overriding what the county does?
Yes, sir. That is a local standard with the guarantee, if you will, that comes through the bonding. While it's consistent with the state code language, that is a guarantee that is provided with the county.
So the county will have control on the decommissioning at some future point in time?
That's correct.
The second related question is...
As long as it's in conformance with the state code.
Valid point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and then one other comment is the bonding. A $1,000 bond today is going to be worth a lot less 20 years from now, or 30 years from now, which is a lifetime for these. Is the bonding in today's dollars, or is the bonding in potential future dollars at the time of decommissioning? Because that's what you're trying to guarantee, and there is an inflation factor.
Yes, sir. The legislation with regards to decommissioning provides the flexibility to ensure that there are annual inflationary factors that go along with the particular amount. So, you know, again, the way it is described, if I may hear, pursuant to the Code of Virginia, the decommissioning, again, that state code component gives you the flex, gives the localities the flexibility to ensure that any changes, increases, if you will, in the bonding amount is covered within the guarantee that is put forward and accepted by the county.
Other questions? Anyone of Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you.
Sir?
I said, "Thank you."
Anyone?
I have questions of mine. I have some comments.
Mr. Ruddy, so my understanding is that before site plan approval is given, that there's a written agreement regarding the decommission process that's entered into between the landowner or the utility with the county. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If the county determines that decommissioning plan isn't sufficient, at what level is that determined? Is that determined at the administrative level? Is that determined at the board level? And what happens if the landowner disagrees with the decision that's rendered by whatever level that's brought forth?
It would be done at the time, or should I say, prior to them actually developing the site. As you will recall, there's a requirement that a site plan is provided and approved by Frederick County prior to any or the commencement of any activity. It's at that time that the details associated with the bonding would be secured and guaranteed.
And how do we determine what's appropriate and not appropriate at that administrative level?
It's a very good question. I think the way it is proposed is that, specific to the state code, if I can just take one second here and pull that back up, based upon an estimate of a professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth who is engaged by the applicant with experience in preparing decommission estimates and approved by the locality. So again, that ties us directly back to the state code. Through the approval of the site plan process, an expert engineer would have to provide that, and of course, that would have to be endorsed by Frederick County, too, before we find it acceptable.
I guess that kind of answers my question. I guess at the administrative level, how does the elected official, the policymaker, convey what the current expectation is of what's sufficient, what's insufficient? I know there are certain parameters from the state code, but at what level do we determine this? You know, if this was a CUP, we would sit here and we'd debate it, and we would come to a conclusion. But if this is at the administrative level, in what way do we transmit that information?
The way we currently, to sort of use an example, we require bonding now on road construction and things of that nature, so that if you come in and we approve a development, we want to make sure that the development gets completed. So there's a construction estimate devised that's reviewed by our Public Works Department for a legitimate figure as to what it would take to construct those roads, and it's bonded to that amount. So it'd be a similar process. Obviously, this is a little different, because we don't have experience with solar facilities. So certainly, the first few, we'd have, we may hire a consulting engineer to review whatever estimate the manufacturer or the applicant gives us to give us that comfort level that it's a legitimate decommissioning price. But we would use a professional, recognized engineer expert to verify whatever number we get.
So on the flip side of that question, if the applicant disagrees with whatever determination is made at the administrative level, are they then able to appeal that decision? And what effect does that have on the county at that point? Are we then locked in to whatever some third-party expert has determined is feasible?
And again, to use that construction example, there are times where someone objects to, they bring us a bonding amount, we say it's not enough, they object, and typically it ends up in the county administrator's office to try and negotiate or settle the dispute. So I don't know that we can give you an exact process or formula, but there is, you know, the appeal would be the applicant objects to what we're requiring, and they would voice those objections, and we'd have to resolve it. But I don't know that I can sit here and tell you exactly how that would be done.
Is there judicial resolution?
I think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McCarthy, I think the quote-unquote doomsday scenario there is, by analogy to what would happen with a public works bond review, is ultimately, if the parties weren't able to reach agreement, presumably the county, relevant county staff would deny the approval, at which point then the applicant, the owner, would presumably, if they felt that strongly about it and were so incentivized, they would pursue legal action to reverse the county's decision.
Do you?
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up with one more thought. So this may be a better question for the county attorney. So would the county, per se, have more control over the destiny of these types of facilities if we did this as a CUP, where on a case-by-case basis we were approving these, versus taking the chance that a court could force it upon us if they felt it was more reasonable than not to move forward with the project?
I don't think that CUP versus by right changes that part of the analysis. The board obviously would have more control in terms of choosing of locations in the CUP process, but as far as the details of it, in fact, actually, the CUP process, if the board were to deny a CUP, the owner can just as easily appeal that denial decision as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No, just a comment, kind of segueing into Supervisor McCarthy's. You know, talking about the CUPs, I frankly think that may be a better way for us to address, and I'm not a fan of CUPs, but there have been a dramatic increase of these construction facilities across the state. There is very limited oversight with the state or regulations governing the siting of the facilities, and we could see any number of these facilities in Frederick County. It is possible that there may be some areas that we may or may not want the facilities. Under the proposed wording, there would be nothing we could do about it. And so I feel like that with regard to the utility-scale solar, that it would be better for us to look at it in the RA District as a conditional use. And I frankly would like to request that we postpone the action tonight on the amendment and send it back to planning staff so that we could have draft language. That would make utility-scale solar a conditional use.
Heard the motion?
Second.
Is there a second? And a second. Now we're in discussion of the motion. Just send it back to staff with the request that they evaluate the CUP process to apply to this.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that. I certainly understand the owner, landowner's right to do with his land, and I certainly don't want to usurp that ability for him to do it. However, in Frederick County, we have other neighbors that are next door, and I think with CUPs, we have an opportunity to direct how that facility is going to perform, be built, how the neighbors may be protected with buffers and so forth and so on. Without that, I don't think we have that. That's my opinion.
Okay. Since we've already gotten down this path, I'll take any other comments, but this is a public hearing, so before we deal with any further, I think we should hear from them.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. For a moment, Mr. Ruddy, thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning these amendments to the Chapter 165, zoning Article 1? Anyone at all? Anyone? Last call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion. So there was a motion proposed, which you will confirm now for me.
Yes, sir.
And a second, which I think I heard from Supervisor McCarthy. So now we'll discuss that motion. Yes, sir?
So, Mr. Chairman, one of the things I'd like to add to Supervisor Slaughter's comments to staff would be that in a solar for industrial use, if one person goes and puts in a 600-acre, 1,000-acre solar operation, it's near a transmitter, so transmission's easy to do, that's one item. But if it's put in a way that it's away from that, or if that developer decides to go and put in batteries to store that solar energy, is that covered under this, or is that not covered? Because if you have solar situations with batteries, now you have a potential, not a potential environmental issue, if those batteries fail. So I'd just like to hear the thought process on that.
Honestly, I do not know the answer to that particular question.
Okay, that's fair. We can get to it.
So this is going back to planning. We ought to give them an opportunity to do their work, and I think that your questions can be answered.
Okay.
And I'm confident it will be.
That's correct. And obviously, ultimately, the direction is that it goes back to, through the Planning Commission, the consideration as a conditional use. That and any additional comments that the board may have, we would make sure are incorporated into what comes back to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anything else for Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you.
Anything else for discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those who know, we'll send it back to planning. We'll see what a CUP process might look like. I would like for you to be sure that you consult counsel on that. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That'll bring us to a public hearing, ordinance amendment, Frederick County, 165, again.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
We're here to discuss conditional uses in the rural area zoning district. And if you recall, the Board of Supervisors previously directed the Planning Commission to evaluate the CUP process and those listed conditional uses, to ensure that the uses and the scale of the uses were appropriate for the zoning district in which they were allowed. And that is what you have in front of you here this evening. The purpose, again, being to add clarity to specific uses, where the intensity of that use is an important consideration in the approval of the CUP. And it also seeks to provide some consistency in the implementation of certain uses. You will notice the home occupation, cottage occupation, kennel discussion. What you will see in the amendments provides further definition to the conditional use, specifically country general store, which would then exclude all fuel sales and cap the square footage allowed at 3,500 square feet. Provides additional regulations for a couple of the specific uses, including country general store. It eliminates, combines, and refines certain other conditional uses. If you can see the whole list that's included within your agenda package, motels, if you will, is another one that's been struck, stricken from the list, and a couple of others have moved up to the permitted use. So again, it's a cleanup exercise, if you will, to those uses that are identified. And again, finally, it codifies recent zoning determinations that relate to home occupations, cottage occupations, and kennels, again, to provide some consistency throughout the ordinance. Similar to the previous one, but the DRC reviewed this in August, supported the proposed changes, as did the Planning Commission and board when it was discussed at their meetings during September. Planning Commission held their public hearing on October the 16th and recommended approval. And much like the previous one, we're here seeking a decision and action from the Board of Supervisors on the proposed amendment to conditional uses in the rural areas.
Questions of Mr. Ruddy, anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning the proposed changes to Chapter 165, Article 1, conditional uses? Anyone? Last call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion of the discussion. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor McCarthy?
I would move for approval of the amended ordinances presented.
Second motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Mr. Chairman, that would need to be a roll call, it's an ordinance.
Sorry. Thank you, sir. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right. More liaison reports, are there any? No one? Citizen comments. The opportunity for citizens to comment and discuss, or comment to the board on any issue, any issue at all. Anyone like to comment to the board? Yes, ma'am. If you could have your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Hello, I'm Carrie Anne Kite. I'm an associate member of the American Institute of Architects and a resident of the Shawnee District. At the AIA Regional Conference last week, I was reminded how design matters in our lives. Design can prevent the spread of disease and determine how we move through spaces, and design can also be used in crime prevention. I attended visibility, risk mitigation, and school design, and this focused on SEPTED, the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. SEPTED is based on the principle that appropriate environmental design can increase the perceived likelihood of detection and apprehension, known to be the biggest single deterrent to crime. Proper design can lead to an improvement in the quality of life for citizens. That session featured case studies showing transparency as natural surveillance. The use of windows in public schools has increased around the country over the years, specifically because of the concept of SEPTED. It seems counterintuitive that more glass equals more security, but the research supports this. I came away fully confident in our new school designs. They are using the latest in crime prevention strategies, and minimal changes using these methods can also help to make Greenwood Mill a safer community property as well. Some have questioned why square footage in schools vary and why our schools are getting bigger and more expensive. The Americans with Disability Acts passed in 1990 made every building after this time conform to new regulations, adding square footage, including classrooms, hallways, and bathrooms. Buildings before then, like Jameswood Middle, Jameswood High School, and Ailer, were not built with these larger standards. Upgraded designs, like doorless entry bathrooms and motion sensors, add square foot and cost, but they reduce the spread of illness and deter bad behavior. With state funding tied to attendees, attendance, this is also a need. And if you look at the Virginia Department of Education data, a sharp increase in square footage started after the Sandy Hook shooting. Along with material increases in costs, schools have increased security, adding additional costs to construction. At the same time, the VDOE guidelines added more stringent guidelines for site, environmental concerns, and energy efficiency, also adding cost across the entire state. And starting this year, all school plans must be reviewed for active shooter risk mitigation, adding cost and time. The fourth high school is the top of the school's CIP list this year. Look past what the building looks like, and please consider how it functions. The architects and engineers are creating learning environments that adhere to the latest technology required for education and safety. They're keeping our students safe from crime, safe from disease, and safe from bullies. Energy efficiency can be more costly upfront, but save thousands in annual operating expenses. Energy efficiency can be more costly upfront, but save thousands in annual operating expenses. And most of all, they are creating an environment that is optimal for learning. Transparency is a good thing. These schools may look a lot different than the schools when we were younger, but we were not living in the same times. We are serving a more diverse population in terms of physical and mental ability, and we are serving a population who have grown up knowing school shootings can happen anywhere. I am not employed by any firm that does design for schools. I am simply advocating for the profession and for the students of our community. Please let us follow the research, keep our schools safe, and support the education and design professionals as they do their job in designing our schools. Thank you, and I have some information.
Thank you. If you could leave that with Mr. Tibbs or, missing. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
You're gonna have to help that.
My name's John Wright, and president of the Frederick County Professional Firefighters Association, Local 4145, and a resident of the Red Bud District. I just wanted to offer a few words tonight to Supervisor Trout, as her time on this board comes to a close. Two years ago, the Shawnee District and this community got hooked on Trout, and man, did we catch a good one. I hope this board will keep this in mind and seek a replacement that fits the mold of Shannon and what her constituents voted to elect until a special election can be held. Shannon, on behalf of all firefighters on the job here in Frederick County, thank you for your unwavering support on addressing the issues that we face every single day. Your voice of reason and advocacy for our firefighters, our deputies, our schools, and our county services will be sorely missed. Thank you for all your words of wisdom and working for the greater good of our growing community. We wish you, your husband, and your family the very best, and as a token of our appreciation, please accept this helmet, complete with leather shield engraved with your name and our proud IAFF logo. You have earned it. Job well done.
All right. Anyone else like to address the board on any subject at all? Anyone? Anyone at all? Then we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting, and if the board would permit me, under board comments, to address Supervisor Trout, and let you know how much of a pleasure it has been serving with you. We will miss you. You have served with great dedication and distinction, and we wish you all the very best as we move forward. We'll miss you here. Other comments from the board?
I do.
Rise and roll.
Two things. Number one, we had a ribbon-cutting in my district, opening up another portion of Sherrando Park, out on Warrior Drive, and if you haven't had an opportunity to, to go by there and see that, it's exciting, and I think you'll really enjoy it. It's used daily. Our Parks and Recreation Department does a great job. There's other things to come that will be out there that will even make it even better, but it's, and I also want to thank VDOT for their help and financial assistance in getting grants that helped us do that. It's much appreciated. We have great guys in our community here that work with VDOT. The other thing is, Top of Virginia Builders Association understands that not everyone is going to go to college, and there should be some opportunities for those folks to participate in vocational activities, and we're working very hard, I'm a member of that group, working very hard to provide some of that. Last year, two groups that we had started, we're fortunate enough to go to the International Building Institute Conference and participate, and our group from Hanley got an honorable mention. It was our first year there, so we're very proud of them. We'd like to send two groups this year. It takes money to do that, and we're asking for contributions, and I will lay these out on the table over there. Doesn't have to be a big amount. It can be $5 or $10, whatever you can give, but it would certainly be appreciated, and it helps these young folks to understand that there are some other jobs out there other than doctors and lawyers and Indian chiefs. So, and we really need those folks. We, we need them in our community. They're a great benefit to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Supervisor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two days ago, we observed Veterans Day, and I, I think it's unfortunate that we only take a few days a year to recognize the veterans. So, even though today's not Veterans Day, I wish a happy belated Veterans Day to all those who serve our country. Thank you for all the sacrifice and support that you've given us, because we wouldn't have the right to sit here at this desk and make these decisions and have the representative democracy that we have without the sacrifice that our veterans have made and those who have given their lives for our country. That's the first thing I want to say. And second thing, I want to say, Shannon, when you join the board, I know as well as you, it's a great adventure. It's also, it's, you're going into the unknown. You never know how things are gonna turn out, and I think you're finding out very quickly. Marriage is an even greater adventure with unknowns and things, so I wish you and your husband the very best on the new adventure that you're undertaking, and we'll miss you.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman. Go to Supervisor.
Chairman, I just want to wish Supervisor Trout all the best in her future. I've enjoyed working with her, and I know that she will have a long, lustrous career someplace. Thank you.
Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Chairman, I have three items to bring. First item is, Mr. Tierney and I went to a banquet conference. I thought it was informative, educational, and I'd encourage you all to come and join us next year. We have issues dealing with taxes, environmental issues, et cetera, and if we all came down, I think we might have a bigger impact. One of the items discussed was giving counties the same taxing authorities, municipalities. We talked about solar, we talked about building, we talked about growth, and so a lot of items that I think we would just appreciate all your input on, so I'd just encourage you next year to consider going to that. Second item, as Mr. McCarthy said, two days ago was a, was Veterans Day, and my wife and I were going and door-knocking in this recent election, and we met a gentleman who said, "You see the guy over there? He's a veteran too." And we talked to him, very unassuming, 93-years-old. And just asked him, "Are you a veteran?" He said, "Yes." What he forgot to mention was, he was one of the veterans that landed on Omaha Beach, second wave. First wave, he saw nothing but dead people. Second wave, they took heavy casualties. He is the most unassuming gentleman you'll see. But without people like him, in which the expected casualty rate was 80%, eight out of 10 were not expected to survive, you have to respect people like that. So, for Mr. Pope, Mr. Leon Pope, thank you very much for your service. For those of you who teach history, I asked him to come and talk. It's one thing to read in a history book about the invasion of Normandy. It's one thing to read about the history book about people on Omaha Beach. It's another thing to shake hands with that person, to talk to that person, look them eye to the eye, and see what he had to say. General Eisenhower wrote a letter, which is on the, in the Pentagon, next to the Secretary of Defense's office, and said, "Dear Mr. President, I'm sorry we failed. There was no guarantee in Normandy that we'd be successful." So, Mr. Pope, thank you very much for your service. And finally, Mrs. Trout, thank you for your service. We've agreed on some things, we've disagreed on some things. But you know what I really, really appreciate? I appreciate your willingness to go and say, "Lane, I disagree with you. Make a stand," and do so. And Mr. Wright, it was very, very thoughtful of you. I tip my hat to you on what you did here. That is just complimentary. Good job. Really appreciate what you did on behalf of your association for Ms. Trout, Mrs. Trout. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Trout.
Thank you. I do have some comments regarding leaving, but before I do that, I'd like to make a motion, since it's my last meeting and all, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing to guide the county budget process for the first meeting in January, which I believe is January 8th, so that we can hear public comment before we enter budget season.
I can't accept it.
Because I'm leaving?
It's not on the agenda, and we're past that part of the business.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, okay.
You understand the sentiment, and we, we heard that.
Okay. Somebody make a motion at the next meeting, so that that actually happens, since we've been discussing it so much.
Okay.
Okay. So, comments. "It's truly been an honor to serve the citizens of Frederick County and the constituents of the Shawnee District in this capacity. Two years ago, I spent an entire summer and fall campaigning, mostly knocking on doors every spare minute of my life. During this time, I had the privilege of meeting numerous constituents with a variety of backgrounds and expectations of local government. As I met hundreds of new people, I began to feel like I had a clear pulse on the priorities and goals of the majority of the Shawnee community. I was humbled when the voters chose to, chose me to represent them, and I promised to be their voice on this board. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for trusting me in this role and for allowing me to serve. In the past two years, I've learned a great deal about local government from my fellow board members, from county staff, and from the community. Although I thought I did, I really had no idea what this role entailed, and I'm eternally grateful for this experience. So, thank you for your time and your patience as I learned how to function in this role. Even though the members of this board don't often agree, we are always respectful and civil, and for that, I am truly appreciative. As for my constituents, thank you for being involved and for your support. I hope you will continue to be involved after my departure. If you continue to be involved and voice your opinions and concerns, the future of the county will be bright. I encourage this board to continue to listen to the constituents and plan for the future of our community. I encourage you to be proactive in your funding allocations, especially regarding our public services, including, but not limited to, the school division, police, and fire and rescue. I'm sorry to leave the area prior to the end of my term. It was not my intention when I ran for this office. For those of you that don't know, I got married in September and missed a board meeting, and my husband, a member of the U.S. Air Force, has been reassigned to Beal Air Force Base in California. We're actually moving tomorrow. In closing, actually driving away tomorrow. They packed up my house yesterday. In closing, I slept on an air mattress last night. In closing, I trust that the board will appoint a suitable replacement to fill my spot on the board. As Ms. Williams and Mr. Wright both stated during citizen comment, I would also request that this person have similar values and priorities as myself, until Frederick County can have a special election and the constituents of Shawnee can make a choice for themselves. Thank you again. Also, thank you, Mr. Wright and the Firefighter Association. I really can't, I can't articulate how grateful I am for this gift. Thank you.
Godspeed. Vice Chairman Lofton.
Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Mr. Adjourns, there's a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank everyone for their time and attention. We'll stand adjourned.